The meeting to order, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We, Dr., or Doctor, Board Member Muirin and Board Member Parker, Vice President Parker are unable to make the meeting today, but we do have quorum with three members. So I'll move on to persons wishing to address the board. We did not have anyone sign up. So approval of the minutes, July 12th. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. On to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. There were no new conflicts of interest presented. We'll move to approval of the consent agenda, items seven A through D. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those are approved. On to the reports of the president. We'll start with the Assessment Academy update.
Good afternoon, President Mickelson and members of the board. Phoenisha Foster, the Dean of Curriculum and Instruction. Been here a few times giving you some updates on our HLC accreditation status, and so I wanted to provide you with another update and specifically share with you about two initiatives that we are launching here this fall. So as far as our open pathway process to reaccreditation, with our target date of August, or not August, April 17th and 18th of 2023, that's when we will have our onsite evaluation visit by the accreditors. So all of this is leading up to that. Over this past year, we had criterion teams for the five criteria that have been meeting and figuring out how we are addressing those individual core components. And so we are working on a draft. There's outlines that are out there and working on a draft that will be distributed for review and feedback this fall. And then I'll share more with you about what the IE day is and how that will play into that in just a little bit. Plan then to continue that assurance document revision and another IE day in the spring and then leading into that visit the following year. So we seem to be on good track already, definitely identifying where some of our strengths are and our opportunities and figuring out where we should shore up a few things so that we are ready for that, for that visit. So one of the pieces of the reaccreditation visit, though, is a quality initiative project. And so that is where we chose to apply and then we were selected to participate in HLC's Assessment Academy. And so that was last October, that group of really employees from across campus. And it's changed a little bit. Obviously, we've had some turnover and retirements, and so it's ebbed and flow, but it's been good to have lots of different voices and perspectives as part of that conversation. But we had our first training last October, and from that, we developed our project. And so the title of our project for the Assessment Academy is Advancing Student Learning, and then we've added the word together. So Advancing Student Learning Together, trying to get the whole campus to really just understand how we all have a role in student learning, whether if we are an instructor in the classroom or in their business office, if we work with facilities, and just really understanding that we're all there for the benefit of the students. And so from that, we really, our goal is to have an aligned assessment process and kind of re-understanding what assessment is so that we can really have some conversations that lead to some action based on evidence. And so as I believe I've shared with you before, but our four key components of this is to work on a data management plan, really build the data literacy, how can we use, what do we have and how are we using that to enhance our training and development with both existing pieces and then new employees. And so I'll share with what we're doing there with you and then expand the program assessment plans. So I'll give a little bit of update on that. And then ultimately, that will come together with more of a communication system and how can we use this in our own departments, cross-departments and committees across campus to really continue moving us forward. So one of the things we did last spring was a survey for the whole campus. And it was optional, but we invited all employees, including adjunct and part-time employees, to share what their onboarding experience was like, what they thought, whether they came in 20, 30 years ago or within the past couple of years, and what they saw as strengths and weaknesses and what they thought would be beneficial moving forward. So what we found is there is a pretty robust onboarding process for faculty, but it was pretty inconsistent with other departments. They got a lot of one-on-one time in their department, but kind of the big picture, big priorities were missing. And so the first thing we have put together, and we're actually doing the first one this next Monday, and would invite you to attend in the future. We plan to do this every couple of months. So we're calling it Mission Possible, and it's our Accreditation and Assessment Overview. And so on Monday morning from eighth, or I guess I'll jump to this one. So in that session, we want to talk about our mission and strategic priorities. We want to go over what's the purpose of institutional accreditation. We use HLC a lot as just because HLC says so, because HLC, and what's that really mean and what's the value in it? Given understanding of what assessment is, and it's not just an exam and then a lunch and campus tour, so we have some community building. So on Monday, we will, this will be from 8:30 to noon or 12:30. Campus leadership has committed to it. We have at least 24 folks signed up so far, so we're excited for this. We're invited. Ideally, it's going to be moving forward, anyone that's new to the community within the past two months. And this would include both employees and stakeholders, board members, advisory council members, if they were available, and requiring employees to be there, but inviting our other external stakeholders. And so there, but then we also, since COVID was so weird, as we've talked about how many times, we've invited any employees that joined our campus within the past year. So we have quite a large group that will be there and then different leaders that will share different pieces throughout the day. So knowing that, you know, talking about mission and strategic plan and accreditation and assessment could possibly be a little dull. I don't know why anyone would think that. But we've built, hopefully, some activities that will be fun. So we've got some team building with some puzzles, have people sitting in groups. We've got a video that we are almost ready to put out that will be shared on Monday in interviewing different folks from across campus that say, hey, this is where I work and I impact student learning in this way. Definitely some discussion built in along the way. And then there's an activity, just different, exploring both our internal MyTech site and our website to find where some of those key pieces of information, to answer some of those trivia questions. So a blackout-type game. We'll be brainstorming, looking through the criteria, the HLC criteria, and just looking through and highlighting where we see our roles fitting in and being impacted, and then modeling a little bit of how the assessment cycle plays out in terms of setting your goals and figuring out how you're going to get there and looking at the results and making some changes moving forward. So it's an interactive morning. We're excited to see how it goes and hopeful that this will really provide a strong foundation for all employees. So then when they join in those different meetings or in committees, in different conversations, they feel like they know what's going on rather than just hearing a bunch of acronyms. The other piece that has come out of this is the start of IE days. So that stands for Institutional Effectiveness Days. And we've set three of them for this next year. One of our fellow tech colleges had started implementing four of these a year, a few, four of these a year, a few years ago, and they've had a lot of success with them. So we've actually identified like October 12th and February 22nd are the days after Native American Day and the day after President's Day. So it is taking an instruction day each semester, but we feel like it will be well worth it with what we'll be focusing on there, and then one day in the summer. So one each term. These agendas are not set by any means, but I wanted to share with some ideas for what we would do on those days. Providing for sure over the next two years, an accreditation update and really looking at where we're at with that insurance argument and the highlights, I guess, of each of those criterion. Weaving in some compliance pieces, which is something that we need to give a little bit more focus to. So having a compliance topic, whether that be a FERPA, as I have on the October idea, and also with Marcella and the Access and Workforce Opportunity Position, really weaving some of those trainings into this day as well. And then focusing on some time to learn more about the assessment cycle and process and work on what we should be doing in those as far as tracking them. So excited to see how these will roll out this year and how we can find value in them and then narrowing it on those agendas as we go. I did wanted to share, I know these screenshots, they're just, they're not meant for you to be able to read more visuals on that. But one thing that we did implement last summer that has really provided great value to the academic side as we did a little bit of a pilot last year and then hoping to expand this across campus this year. You know, thinking of that assessment cycle with that Plan, Do, Check, Act, but we have a platform called Watermark. And in there, that's where the academic side last year focused on identifying six to eight program outcomes for each of their, for each program, and they've entered these into the system and then identifying two to three measures. So thinking of, it might be a test, but what are those major measures or assessments that they're tracking with their students? And so this is just, the image that's on there is just the output of one we put in there. But I think what's really valuable, and we've had great feedback from faculty so far, is they've got the description in there, and then you can see with that color bar, they just need to pop, we split everything into a four, three, two, one scale, where three is always the goal, where students are meeting expectations, four is exceeding, two is approaching, and so on. And then they can quickly, right, as they do that, just give what's fresh in their mind, hey, this is what worked or didn't work, looking more in detail at their rubrics, and then establishing an action plan. And so they have these for each of those key assessments, and then we can see that over time or look at the end of the year. Hey, on this particular outcome, we met in two areas and we didn't meet in one. So do we need to do anything there? Maybe we didn't meet expectations overall in any of these. How can we realign some resources that way? So we're really excited about this particular tool. Faculty have really, really latched onto it. We did not expect last year them to put all their results in. The goal last year was to get their outcomes established and build the back, because then we can transfer it over every year and just build and add on to it. So on this graphic, you can see, I pulled this last week. We had across the 58 academic programs that have something in here. Actually, 46 of the academic programs put something in here, and they've entered 629 measures and 305 outcomes. So you can see the progress already. And now this next year, the expectation is that they do input all of their results, and so those bars will fill up as far as met, not met. And we can see these are aligned to our common learning outcomes, which are institutional as far as technical skills, professionalism, communication and problem-solving, critical thinking. So we can see as well, when people are talking about transferable skills or soft skills, where some of our strengths and opportunities are. I know Rich isn't here today, but there is a way then also to allocate some budget or make some budget requests there. So I know it says a big zero right now, but that's something that we hope will increase, right? So this platform has been, we're excited to continue to use that, just some other screens that we have on there as far as actions and status of different, different action plans. So that is what I have to share with you today. Is there any questions or feedback or comments?
Well, I know, I think Board Member Muirin is actually going to attend.
Is he coming?
Monday, I think.
Monday, I think so, yeah. I know he's been invited.
Which is great, because a great way for him to onboard as a new board member to experience this. So thank you for including him on that and seeing this. So with, I am obviously not using this platform, but it looks very user-friendly in fact that you can actually see the results of your inputting in that and so forth. So I think we can all collect data, but unless we know how to read it and use it, it's not helpful. So this does look like something that will be helpful for these.
That's the feedback we've had so far, that you can pop, and if they screw up, you can just, you know, change it or add some different, go back and add if another, another result comes in. So the faculty have been really, really a lot of positive feedback so far on it.
Awesome. Awesome. And I love the addition of the IE days because I do think that's just going to help build strength going into agency accreditation to get everybody on the same page for that. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Good additions.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I think the onboarding piece is huge. It doesn't matter if you're an educational institution or if you're a hospital or a bank or whatever. I think the challenge is always, how do you get all of the people working to buy into and to understand the big picture? And so I think that's a great, a great idea, and I loved your kind of interactive fun. So it's not like, oh, great, I go sit there for four hours and I'll get a lunch out of it, you know? Where it's actually, maybe you'll get to meet people that you didn't know before, and you'll get to do it in a fun way versus just kind of that sitting and listening. So I'll be anxious to hear how it goes, and it sounds like you have a great first group. It's nice to have an actual decent size of a first group because then you can kind of get the feel of the people versus having, you know, five people who are just awkwardly sitting there and so.
That's the part we'll have to figure, like, right now, we're hoping, because we want within the first couple of months, so people feel welcome, but, well, we have a large enough group every two months, and that's where, it was actually President Griggs that suggested, including our stakeholders and those advisory board members and board members and tech council members. And I think that's really a strong addition, and we're excited to expand this once we get our feet on the ground a little bit.
Even city council member, you know, people who are financial investors, I think it would be really good for them to hear and understand the, all the goings-on that happen kind of behind the scenes, because people aren't always necessarily privy to the details of that. So great ideas.
Thank you.
I have a motion to acknowledge the report and the progress for the Assessment Academy.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you, Phoenisha.
Awesome. And before I sit down, I'd like to introduce Dr. Sarah Vandecamp. She is our Director of the Eastern South Dakota Perkins Consortium. She joined our campus last summer, last July, and has been working to us. This is a brand-new position, and she'll share where it comes from and what she's doing with it. So a great addition to our campus.
Thank you. Welcome. Hi, thank you. Thanks for having me. So, President and the board, it's nice to meet you. As Phoenisha said, my name is Sarah Vandecamp, and I thought I would start actually by just telling you a little bit about myself, because I want to just lay a lot of background and overview for you. So I've actually been in higher education for about 15 years, and I've worked in a variety of offices, primarily in liberal arts education. So this has been quite a transition for me to learn more about what is CTE? What does two-year school look like, interacting more with high schools? And it's been a great learning curve for me, even in the midst of a pandemic. It's been fun to get to know that. But I've also owned a small private company for a little while, and I've worked in the registrar's office, the admissions office, the foundation office, in a variety of places. So when this opportunity came up last summer, it was kind of aligning with a lot of my passions because it has a little bit of an entrepreneurial flair. And I get a lot of direction from different areas, so it's nice to be able to come together and build this into something that's new, and I'm excited to tell you about it. So I thought I would start really basic, because some people are confused about what is Perkins. They think that maybe it is like a Perkins loan. They've maybe heard of that when they went to college. But Perkins Five is actually a federal formula, so it's meant to improve and enhance existing CTE programs within post-secondary and secondary institutions. So when we talk, when I taught Perkins Five, it does go back. Some of my teachers will say they've been working on it since 1984. So it actually was reauthorized in 2018. So I believe that's kind of where the birth of my position began, because there were just a lot of new ideas, initiatives, and the new law is actually called Strengthening Career and Technical Education for the 21st Century. So rather than saying that long thing, we just say Perkins Five and what that looks like. So to better understand sort of how it, how it works, so the federal money, Perkins is federal money, and then it's given to the state, which is then allocated to districts. So I kind of come in when I actually help to allocate some of the money to the consortium, like within the consortium, to my districts. So I'll talk a little bit more about what is a consortium on the next slide, but I just want to kind of make clear like where the funding is coming from and what it's about. So some people are wondering, what is a consortium? And actually, we are the largest consortium in the state, which is pretty exciting. So there's 23 high schools that participate in the Eastern South Dakota Consortium. I kind of have a co-director, you could say, that is on the western half of the state. So she's housed at Western Dakota Tech. And I personally think I have a really awesome consortium because I've gotten to know all of them really well, and I, I just, I appreciate everything that each, each district does. But I think that the idea behind the consortium is really to, to see that the whole is greater than the parts. So if there's a way that we can collaborate, partnership, work together, not only for, you know, building relationships between existing schools within the consortium, but also within like bridging the gap to technical education is really kind of what, what we want to do. So cooperative efforts and projects, assessing needs. And then I'll talk a little bit more about long-term planning, but we also want this to be something that is so great that it's really improving the economy of South Dakota. Because we're really, I mean, I'm looking at it a little bit through rose-colored glasses, but the reality is, you know, we want to build them from middle school to high school to, to our CTE programs within a technical program. So, and obviously, I'm biased to Southeast Tech, but I do think that it just, it's a really beautiful cycle. So if there's a way that I can help to grow that, that's what I want to do. One thing that also I thought I would mention is that when I talk about the sharing of resources, I think it's really great. I have a couple of examples I'd love to just share for a second. I have two schools, Chester and Philandrew. They, as you know, are a more rural district, and there are things that maybe they couldn't have ever afforded to have for their CTE programs without Perkins funding. So I've learned about artificial insemination this year and what that looks like. And we were able to purchase things so that their ag program could, you know, I helped them write the objectives and helped them write the justification for some of this funding. And it's pretty expensive to buy some of that equipment. So it was really awesome to see them, like Chester and Philandrew both said, hey, what if we both use this? And what if we both are working on these things together? And then I can justify that to the state to say, hey, this is going to be used by more than one school because, I mean, as an educator, maybe they only use it for a few weeks out of the year during a semester. So if they're within proximity of being able to share those resources, it's really helpful. And then they were able to get it. So I was able to see it being used. I saw them demonstrate it last week at our SDA CTE meeting. And the same thing with my Montrose and McCook Central, very close together, like 10 miles apart. And they wanted to invest in a virtual welder. So again, something I was not familiar with, have learned a lot about, and they're going to be able to share that between schools. So, and it's actually, it belongs to the consortium, so it's really great. Then when we talk about it at meetings, they can say, hey, you have that. And it's actually, well, it's not just you, it's all of us that have it. So it's, it's really cool. Okay, I wanted you to have an idea of where our schools are located. So Marketing was kind enough to help me put this map together. And you can see that most of them are within like a couple hours of Sioux Falls, probably. So we are like kind of centrally located, which is really nice. But then we do have a couple of outliers in Battle and Hoven. They're pretty far north, but they don't seem to mind coming to Sioux Falls. So it's a great group of schools. All right, so it's, I'm talking rather fast, but I feel like there's just a lot of things I want to tell you. There have been a lot that we've been up to during this school year. So I actually was able to visit all of these districts, even with some of the COVID restrictions. They were kind enough to take my temperature and let me in. So I was, there was a flair, as you can guess, for each school. So that was really neat to be able to do that. And then we started talking about sort of the long-term planning. I'm planting a seed for some of their local need assessments, which I'll talk about here in the next couple of slides. But I really wanted to get an idea of what are things that you need in your school to be successful? And how can I help you write about that so that we can either help you in a professional development sort of way by sending you somewhere? Or is there equipment that you need? Just really having them think long and hard about that, because I think some of them haven't even been asked. And they were just privileged to have somebody care, which was really neat. And then obviously, the ordering of a lot of our tangible items is huge. So that's actually what's taking place right now. So it's, it's a cycle where they figure out kind of what they need throughout the year. And then, starting in the spring, I have them work on justifications, and then they send it to me. I work with the state, and then we find out after July 1st, usually, when it's the new fiscal year, sort of what's been approved and what hasn't. And after we find out approval, which thankfully, everything, I mean, I just didn't have enough funding, but everything that was requested was pretty much approved this year. So that was really exciting because a lot of my districts are just thrilled. But unfortunately, with COVID, there's a lot of things on back order. So it will be really interesting to see how that all plays out because we ran into that a little bit last year. But this year, some stuff is like 12 weeks out to get ordered, but it was all approved. So that's kind of the way that works for ordering. So right now, we're in the middle of ordering like 107 different things for different places. And then obviously assisting with like reimbursement requests for consortium stuff. So if there's a conference that someone obviously wanted to attend, Perkins can typically cover travel, hotel, things of that nature. And then another big thing this year is I really wanted to send out a satisfaction survey to a lot of my districts to find out what is it that you're wanting or needing. They haven't necessarily been part of a consortium, or if they have, it's not been very active. So it's been exciting to have them tell me what are their needs. And several of them actually mentioned that they wanted help with grant writing. So I was able to host a grant-writing workshop. So a lot of things that I'm doing, I just, I, I learn because of what the need is, and that's kind of how I've developed things this last year. And then a really big part of our year was actually our annual meeting. So my goal is to have this every year. I've planned out this next year also during spring break. We did it during spring break this year, and it worked really nicely just because campus wasn't quite as busy. And it also gives them a great opportunity to see what Southeast Tech is like. And it was really awesome. I have a couple of schools, one that wants to build a welding program. So I was able to connect them with our welding instructor. One of them said, hey, we're looking at horticulture. What does that look like? And then one of our horticulture professors came over and was able to kind of explain things. So I kind of can help bridge that, which is really fun. It also gives them an opportunity to network, obviously, between districts, but also industry partners. So we were really privy. So we were really privileged to have Diana Vanderwoody from the tech board. So she came and just gave us some updates on like what, what are some advancing strategies for student support and success in the area, and how can we make that better? And then we had a guided panel, which was really fun. Marmen Energy came and brought one of their students and discussed a little bit about like what Build Dakota is, and how does that work if they maybe have students in their district that are interested in something like that? And then we also had a ton of state announcements and updates and things like that, but that is something that we plan to do every year, just so that we can keep everybody on the same page. And I think it's a really great way to showcase Southeast Tech. So it gets everybody on campus. We were, we had it in the hub, so it was really a nice way to feature Southeast. And then we had campus tours and things like that, that people could participate in. And then just, that's, I also put up the like tentative schedule, but it's what we did for our grant writing workshop, which was actually in addition to the help that we received with the South Dakota Extension Office. So they were kind enough to help with that, because it can be pretty costly to help to host something, and they paid for half of it, which is, it worked out really nicely. And then similar to, let's see, what we did this last year, we're going to do this year. So I'll do site visits, we'll have justifications, they'll write all of those things. But a really big part of this year will be something called the CLNA. So this is called a Comprehensive Local Needs Assessment, and this is required by the federal government. So it's a big, big initiative. They did launch in 2018, obviously this is part of Perkins Five, but I wanted to give you just a little timeline here. They launched the CLNA Lite, so they piloted that with a couple of schools starting in 2019. And then obviously, COVID came along in 2020. And then this last year, I was told, let's not pressure these schools. They got a lot on their plate. When you do your site visits, tread lightly. Like, tell them you're here to help, tell them that, you know, you want to, you want to see these Perkins dollars used appropriately. I mean, I don't go in there as an auditor, I go in as, how can I help you? And I think that a lot of them really appreciated knowing that when I was in there. But I also, you know, gently laid the foundation of, but be thinking about your long-term strategic plans. So I had written what's called the Local Plan. So the Local Plan actually has to tie in with their district plan. And obviously, it all in all is going to tie to the federal plan, right? So like our priorities, teachers and principals will be given the opportunity to attend a professional development and collaborative time to gain direction and clarity for the consortium. That's one of the priorities, as well as industry-specific equipment will be purchased for CTE programming. And then I'll assist in collaborative efforts to create a robust plan for them. So that's on my side of things. Then for their, they're going to have specific district needs, and then my goal is when they request things, that all of that ties to what they need in their district. So it's really coming down to, is what we're purchasing what they need at the end of the day, right? So this is something that we'll be really working on this fall, and then they'll, they'll have to send it to us in the spring. So we're actually having a meeting, since the consortium is so large, it's going to be a three-day event in November, and it's going to be held in the hub. Well, actually not the auditorium, we're going to do it upstairs in the loft, just because we want to have small group works, workstations for each district, where their administrator is going to be required to attend, and all of their CTE teachers. So they'll all be working together, and then we've also asked anyone that works with special populations, so any special education, things like that, also participate, because we really want that to be part of our, our long-term goal as well. So that's a really big part of what's driving like our planning for this next year that they didn't have. So we're just really growing on what we've already done in this last year. So like I said, we're just adding to what we've done. We've already set the date for our next annual meeting, and I've been working with the Department of Labor, just because several districts have also mentioned like, what is it that schools are, you know, what should we be focusing on right now? And some of them, it might be, oh, we want to start like a CDL program or something. And, oh, do you have to be 18? We don't know how to do that. Okay, well, what are some other hot jobs in South Dakota that like we need to be aware of, so that we're building that, starting in middle school if we need to? So that's been exciting. And then to also kind of just get Southeast Tech even more involved in panels and industry partners. And, you know, even just this last week at the ACTE meeting, I was able to connect some of our administrators with some of our teachers, and that was just, it's, it's been a really collective effort, which has been pretty exciting. So I appreciate all of Southeast Tech's partnerships and, and a lot as we grow. And also, I wanted to mention that the Division of College, Career, and Student Success is actually the name of the new division in South Dakota for CTE. So I'm still part of the CTE team, but then there's JAG South Dakota, that'll be under that as well, and then the new Office of Student Wellness and Support. So that's all coming down the pike in the last like few weeks, which you guys are probably aware of, but I'm still educating myself on it a little bit. So anyway, I probably talked for too long, but it's a lot of information, and if you have any questions, I'm certainly open to them.
I have a couple.
Yeah, go for it.
This is a great report, by the way, and it's nice, because you know, we're familiar a little bit with Perkins, with our CTE building and so forth, but to see this consortium. So that's, one of my first questions is, is there a population size that you need to be under for a community or school district for them to be eligible to apply for the consortium? Or is it pretty much any rural that might not have like our CTE program like we do?
My understanding is that it's really any smaller school that maybe can't fund a part-time position or a full-time position that can help them. Because most of the schools I visited, as you know, in a rural district, they wear a lot of hats. So when I talk with the IT instructor, they're also the volleyball coach, the other thing, and this, so there are five other things they have to do. So Perkins is like, they need some help, and that's what I'm there for.
And so do they do, apply to, how do they come? Because I look at the map, and I'm like, there's a lot of other small districts.
There are, yeah.
That aren't a member of this, and I doubt they have a big enough program.
Yeah.
So is there ideas, and there's only one of you, so are there ideas to add like a third coordinator for the state, or what?
I think, well, some of, there are existing consortiums that are not state consortiums.
Gotcha.
So 23 is where we are right now, but I know of at least a couple other schools that are interested. And by the time they had reached out to me, the opt-in period was in January. So they have to re-sign being part of our consortium. As far as I know, everyone that's in it currently wants to be, but then there's other schools that would like to maybe join. And at that point, I don't know like what capacity is, because the other consortium, I think, is 13 schools. So we're like a lot bigger than them, right? But yet our funding is similar, because maybe they're a more needed, you know, they have more need. So, because I had asked that, I was like, how come she gets more money than I do? That's not fair. But yeah, I, so I definitely fight for my schools when I'm trying, especially when it comes to money. So I think that as long as, you know, there's some interest, the hard part is some of them have really long ties together. So they don't necessarily, it feels a little political, like maybe they feel like they have to stay in a certain district. And I'm, I don't think I can like advertise, but certainly if, if they want to, which I know of a couple that do, they can apply to be part of us as long as it's during the opt-in period.
Perfect. And, you know, I, you'd mentioned that the faculty, or I shouldn't say faculty, the administration or CTE teachers are coming to site visits. It'd be neat if we could work in with the foundation some way to get actual students to come in to visit, because I think that would be amazing for them to come see the campus and a great tie-in, since they're already using parts of STC anyway to do that, to get them to have a site visit, to, you know, work with the foundation or admissions office somehow to do that.
What's nice is we actually, like Stephen Williamson has been really great. Like, he actually helped me put together with his office this last year for the first annual meeting that we had. So his, he kind of helped draw some of those ideas in. And then admissions and dual enrollment is something that we're trying to get even more involved in for this next year.
That's fantastic. And you just mentioned middle school twice, and I think that's just great, if we can just even push this down.
I know.
Into that, because I know there's only so many dollars, so you try to hit the high school first and so forth, but anytime we can push that down, because we just feel so strongly if we can get that attachment at a younger age, and they know that's an opportunity for them, that we can keep those, especially at the students coming to school.
Engaged, yeah, definitely.
Very cool, lots of exciting things.
Yeah.
Going on, and it's, and it's great. I mean, we're so fortunate that we live in Sioux Falls and have access to these resources, but that shouldn't mean that other people don't have access. And so it's awesome when we can see students around the state being able to experience new jobs and careers and things that they haven't been exposed to, because that helps build our state as a whole. And who knows, maybe some of those people will end up working in Sioux Falls, or working for a company out of Sioux Falls, but working in some of those rural areas that are back home for them. So I think it's a win-win for the Sioux Falls community and each of the smaller communities that were, that you're being able to serve as well. So good work.
I learned that they love Sioux Falls, so that's what's really awesome, is most of the time, if they have to come here, they're like, oh, we have to, oh darn, you know? So definitely help Sioux Falls.
Good work.
Awesome.
Well, thank you. Do I have a motion to acknowledge the Eastern South Dakota Perkins Consortium update overview and future plans?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. As approved. When's the first day of class? Okay. Twenty, 23rd. Do you have anything else to add, Dr. Griggs?
I just wanted to, first Bob Griggs, President Southeast Tech, thank you, President Mickelson and board members, wanted to thank Phoenisha for her really outstanding work with the Assessment Academy. And she'll be the first one to say, it isn't me, it's a team, but you need somebody up front that, you know, champions it to the entire campus. And she's been able to do that so well with our faculty and with staff as well, because this isn't just an academic measure, it's across campus. And I think she's done a great job there. And then really taking the lead on the Mission Possible piece is, one of the examples that she mentioned was the orientation. And we do an exceptional job, I think, with the faculty orientation, with both full-time and part-time faculty. With staff, it's a little different. It has been somewhat hit or miss, depending on when they come in during the year and so forth. But we're hoping that this type of significant effort or intentional effort that will go on throughout the year will help provide a better, you know, background on, on the campus, as she said, with the mission and all of our different initiatives. But, you know, understanding who we are and what we're about, and we hope that results with a better learning environment for our students. But then also, I also wanted to thank Sarah for her excellent leadership in 23 different schools to try to get your arms around and pull together. She, I think, has done an outstanding job there, and we really are proud to have her come here and present. And I do think it's important to recognize Laura Shibe, who was somewhat the, the instigator of this pilot and partnership that's emerged. She approached Benjamin and I, and we've had, I don't know how many different meetings we had in terms of talking through what this could be, and, and what it's turned into has, has been even more, and the potential is certainly there to far exceed what we were setting up as, as initial measures. So it's exciting to see that outreach and the opportunity and the willingness, again, of our communities around Sioux Falls to partner and collaborate and pull together. But do thank Laura Shibe from Department of Education for her excellent help and vision and, and leadership in making it happen. So just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Griggs. Okay, so August 23rd, so right three days before the public schools, so right in that timeline. So good luck to all of you. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.